Does it work, Jen? We're rolling. Jen?
Excuse me, ladies and gentlemen. I don't have a gas. Excuse me.
Settle down.
We're ready to start our meeting. We got a little delay with getting our camera up and rolling. So, welcome to the Summers Zoning Commission. This is a regular meeting on July 1st, 2019 at 3:33. 6:33. Did I say 3:33? 6:33 in the Summers Town Hall. Call to order, we have Dan Ferro to my left, Carl Walton, Lucas Cherry, and Jennifer Roy, our staff liaison and zoning enforcement officer, and myself, Jill Conklin. New business. Are we...
We're gonna table that?
Are we tabling? We have...
What are we doing with that?
Let me read it. First, new business, we have application number 19-008 Nancy Kors, 63 Maple Street, Summers for Nor, for an application for a special use permit to operate a T-room per Section 214-98(c) in the zoning regulations.
Hi, good evening. John Parks, I'm here on behalf of Nancy Kors. Now, procedurally, I understand that she gave a check in an application?
Yes, I believe so. There's an application right here.
Yeah, we would just like to take it back.
You want to withdraw the application?
Well, I don't know if I'd call it withdrawal, because...
You want to postpone taking it up? No. Okay.
Do-over.
You wanted to do over.
So you want to withdraw?
If I need to withdraw it, I'll withdraw without prejudice.
You can withdraw.
Oh, yeah, no problem. No prejudice.
A do-over.
Yeah, we could just re... You know, withdraw it.
Yeah.
Or without prejudice?
Sure.
Sure, no problem. That was quick. Now, for the... Now, we have a public hearing. Our public hearing, we have...
Continuation?
We have a continu... Well, we have two items. We have two public hearings tonight. We're gonna take them one at a time. I'm gonna read the legal notice for both. The Summers Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on Monday, July 1st, 2019 at 6:30 in the Summers Town Hall, 600 Main Street, Summers, Connecticut. To receive public comments on the following. One, number 19-006 Bay State Blasting Incorporated Leadlow Mass continuation of the June 3rd, 2019 meeting, application for a special use permit for excavation, earth removal of approximately 12,000 cubic yards at 40 Halley Lane per Summers, Section 214-70 of the zoning regulations. The second public hearing is number 19-007 for Bruce Woods at 223 Wood Road, Summers, Connecticut, the application for a special use gravel bank permit renewal to conduct earth removal and filling operation at 263 Wood Road, Summers, per Section 214-70 of the zoning regulations. Said applications are on file in the Land Use Office of the Town of Summers, the Summers Town Hall. At this hearing, interested persons may be heard and written communication received. Dated Summers, Connecticut, the 10th day of June, 2019. This was published on June 20th and June 28th, 2019. So, we're gonna start, we're gonna open up Bay State or...
90.
Yeah, Bay State Blasting, 006, at 6:37 PM.
John.
John, John Parks.
Good afternoon.
Evening.
John Parks, on behalf of Bay State Blasting's application, I'm submitting a letter. I'd like to read the letter into the record. The applicant in the above special use permit hereby withdraws the application without prejudice. As the application has been withdrawn, there should be no further discussion of this matter by the Summers Zoning Commission.
Solving problems.
So...
So?
So, if...
So, there's no further...
So, there's no further comment?
Withdrawn.
Yeah.
It's withdrawn. There's nothing to discuss. Once it's withdrawn, there's nothing to discuss. So...
I make a motion to accept the request for withdrawal of application 19-006 with the letter written and delivered to us by Attorney John Parks.
Carl made a motion. Anyone want to second that?
I'll second that.
Dan Ferro, second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, make a motion to close the public hearing.
On that application.
On that application.
It's...
It never started.
Never started up?
Yeah. So, does somebody want to make a motion to close this section? Just make a...
We accepted the letter.
I'll make them...
We accepted the letter of withdrawal of application. I think that's enough.
Yeah. So, we closed the public hearing at 6:...
There is no public...
Well, we did. We opened it, so we have to close it at 6:38 PM. It's closed. Okay, so, we're gonna move on to our second public hearing, which is application number 007 for Bruce Woods, Brucey Woods.
We're opening it at 6:38.
At 6:38, opening this public hearing.
Good evening. Jay Ursery, Jay Arusso, and Associates here representing Bruce Wood. This is an application, and I always say to renew, but I guess technically, we're not really renewing. We're issuing a new permit to continue his gravel excavation operation up on Wood Road. I know you're all fairly familiar with it. It's been here for a number of years.
Okay, can you hold for one minute while people are exiting the room?
I would be very happy to.
Excuse me, we still have a public hearing going on here, so...
I don't know if it'll pick up the value with the background.
When I was watching it, I was amazed how much it could hear.
In the background?
Yeah. Yeah. Had a date night with my wife. No, she refused to watch it.
You're being recorded now.
She wouldn't refuse to do it. Yes, that's a true statement.
Well, the room emptied quickly, didn't it?
I guess I should've showered.
Don't take it personally. Don't take it personally. Okay. There we go.
I don't think it had anything to do with you, Jay.
No.
Okay, so, again, Jay Ursery, Jay Arusso, and Associates here representing Bruce Wood for application to continue his gravel excavation operation up on Wood Road. The plan that you have in front of you shows a number of things here. The areas that are shown here in the highlighted pink are areas that had previously been excavated. They're currently restored and vegetated. The areas in the stars here are essentially the floor area of the pit. And then, the areas here with the little honeycombs in them are different stockpiles of different materials. The working face or the excavation area is currently over here on the southerly end of the operation. And it's very comparable to what you had last year. Jeff Ford actually put together a little comparison chart here. I don't know if you all saw it. Jeff Ford, your town engineer.
I could've sworn he said Ford.
Oh, you did it? Jeff sent it.
He sent it, right.
Jeff sent it. He didn't give you credit either, by the way.
Oh, boy. Oh, boy.
He made a document. Is that my right?
He had to fix his seal to it.
It actually probably looks more like your writing than his. I can't imagine his...
He had to fix his seal to it.
So, there is a slight change. The working face has grown slightly from 18 to 19, from 13,000 square feet to about 19,000. The open area has increased from 7.2 to 7.6. However, the stockpiles have decreased in size from 1.6 to 1.1, which hence is the change in the floor, the open area. The piles are smaller, just a little more floor area or open area. I actually, gonna be honest, I haven't been up there since late fall, and everything was fine at that point in time. We've had a very wet...
Spring.
Fall, winter, spring, so I'm guessing there have been no complaints this year.
I actually went today.
Were there complaints, though?
I have not heard any complaints. I went today. I took several photos, and it looks, you know, it wasn't... It was a little bit of dust, but that happens when you drive on a dirt road.
Yeah.
And he was actually starting to water.
You were probably just skating.
He was watering when I pulled in, and when I got to the floor of the pit, I took some photos, that there was actually standing water, like there was little puddles from the rain and whatever. I talked to their employee.
Jeff.
Yeah, I don't remember his name, but... So, I have these photos, if anyone wants to look at them. I think it looks pretty good. It's good vegetation.
That's grass? That's gravel.
It's best with...
Ground cover. Ground cover.
Ground cover, vegetation.
He's almost...
Clover.
Really, that's...
He doesn't have very far to go, but to be honest, it hasn't... It moves so little every year. He doesn't sell a lot of material. I think most of it is used on his own jobs, to be honest.
Yeah.
It's kind of remote. It's not in an area that's...
Easily accessible to...
A lot of watering to have that much water.
So, it hasn't changed a whole lot. I bet in the last five or six years, it's barely been moved.
Not really a lot of things going on, anyway.
So, there's not a lot of...
That's okay, though. Yeah, because you keep the dust down, yeah. Yeah, yeah. I thought I was gonna say, I didn't see where you were, where it was going, but yeah. I thought...
Part of their requirements is to say water down as a basis, and I thought it looked good, so...
Previous three years...
Yeah, he does have a water wagon that's there. It's been there now since, I guess, the major issues of a couple of years ago, I think.
You wanna look at any of these photos?
With clover, fescue, ground cover.
The rabbits love that.
It's so inactive that the grass is growing in the gravel.
There's actually black-eyed seeds, it's all up there.
Really?
Forgot.
Decorative ground cover.
Pick a few.
Decorative ground cover.
Did you take those with your phone?
No, just with the town camera.
Say, take a good picture.
No. No, not my phone.
I got four or 5,000 shots from our vacation. Could I stop in and print them? They're sort of the same kind of scenes.
Called shutterfly.
Yeah.
You printed them through shutterfly?
For you, you get a cheat.
So, we did submit a new bonding estimate number. It went up slightly from last year, and we're in the 20-some-odd thousand dollar range. However, there's a 50-some-odd thousand dollar bond that's on file, who's hasn't changed it, that goes back, I don't know, probably four or five years, I think, Jennifer, if I'm not mistaken. So, it's substantially overbonded at this point. It has been for probably the last two or three years. Whether Bruce will change it, we should know.
Is he looking to do that? Have it adjusted?
I honestly can't say, but...
Apparently not.
It's probably not a huge cost difference.
Because wouldn't it be...
The percentage...
Would this be the place to do it? Would it be the place to do it?
It would be the time to do it would be now, yeah.
Doesn't appear to be an issue for him. I'm of the feeling we're probably gonna be with huge uproar closing the public hearing. Because there's no one here to dispute or recommend it.
Right.
Notices and letters.
Doily noticed, yeah. So, I would think we're gonna be approving this tonight.
We did go to planning, and I think you got a positive referral from the planning commission.
Can't see any reason why you wouldn't.
Yeah, no. It's always good.
It's about all I have at this point. If anybody has any questions, I could...
I don't have any questions.
Answer them for you.
Yep, we're good.
Okay, so, I will just say, if there was somebody here...
Well, there's one person.
Oh, there's one person. Do you want to speak on this application for Brucey Woods? No? And do you want to speak on the applica... No? Okay, so, somebody can make a motion to...
I make a motion to close the public hearing on application 19-007 Brucey Wood, 223 Wood Road, Summers, Connecticut, for a special use gravel bank permit renewal to conduct earth removal and filling operation at 263 Wood Road, Summers, per Section 214-70 of the zoning regulations.
Second.
At 6:46 PM. And Lucas, second it. All in favor?
Aye.
That public hearing is closed. So...
Old business.
So, old business, we're moving, we're gonna discuss... Well, we're not gonna discuss.
No, we're not.
Bay State Blasting.
Both of them are withdrawn, right?
Well, no. Nope, just the one.
I make a motion to approve application 19-007 Brucey Wood, 223 Wood Road, Summers, Connecticut, an application for special use gravel bank permit renewal to conduct an earth removal and filling operation at 263 Wood Road, per Section 214-70 of the zoning regulations.
And Lucas, second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, the... Then approve.
Thanks, Jay.
You've said that twice in the room.
Okay. So, do we have any staff reports that we need to look at?
No, I didn't actually, I mean, I've been spending time dealing with the...
Other issues?
Yeah.
Now, you can get back to real business, right?
Well, I have a feeling it's not over.
No, it's not over.
No, it's not.
But it's withdrawn for now.
It's withdrawn for now, so, you know, still have to work on that, you know, and then actually also even Nancy Kors' application, been kind of working on that, so...
But it sounds like there's a gag order on this. We can't even discuss it here with the staff.
Oh, we can't?
No. Well, he said...
There's nothing to discuss.
Oh, that was the base date, not to discuss it, correct?
Right.
Right.
Not the Nancy, they just withdrew without prejudice.
No, not Nancy, I'm talking about...
I've passed that.
Well, he did withdraw that.
I'm on to a second application.
Okay. Yes, so...
That I had heard some concerns about what are we approving it under? No, so, I guess, no.
What the...
Nancy came and gave a presentation for T-house, you have a pass.
I saw that on the...
Yeah, but we were gonna accept an application.
And we were gonna...
We were gonna schedule a public hearing, and we were gonna set up a...
Right. And I just wanted to, you know, verify that I was along the right lines of what you guys were thinking when she gave the presentation, that it be under, you know, 214-98(c) accessory uses, which is bed and breakfast, but it's not a bed and breakfast.
Correct. I saw some issues with...
It doesn't specifically say T-house, so there's concerns from residents that it's...
Oh, that it doesn't say T-room?
Right, so, you know...
Because a T-room, to me, I mean, I have to get technical. Is that like a coffee shop?
No.
I'm pretty much sure that... I'm sure that's why they hired Mr. Parks.
Right.
And he's gonna help us come to an understanding of...
So, I mean, I would agree, and just to kind of comment that...
So, here again, I don't think we should really comment.
Okay. So, that's just what I've been working on.
I'm not even gonna look it up.
Is those two applications, so now they're kind of moot, so I didn't really...
Did you have letters to the effect of...
Oh, there's some correspondence.
Not at this time.
No correspondence?
No, not at this time. Oh, there's one correspondence.
Yeah, so...
I'm kind of talking to their staff.
No, we're on staff reports, so there's no...
No, I was... Oh, I was talking about that particular...
But no, I have not received any written correspondence regarding that application. No.
Were the neighbors on the right or the left?
I don't know. I wasn't specifically.
You're gonna have to canvass the area, that's all. Okay, so, we're gonna move on to correspondence. Tom Carenzo, Genghis Development, discussed possible zone change for a property on Eleanor Road in Summers.
Hello.
Hi, Tom.
How are you?
Good.
Good, how are you?
So, I've been following everything you guys have been doing, or trying to with Planted Metrics, and was hoping that we could have a conversation as to a piece of property we have on Eleanor Road and the age restriction, try and get a sense of what your concerns might be as far as removing the age restriction and just...
Well, aside from the fact that we can't, I've got no other worries.
Do you mind if I sit?
No, feel free.
We don't have any provisions to approve that development if it's not age restricted. None. Okay?
Unless our zoning regulations were changed.
I read your letter, okay? And your letter said that what you would prefer to do would be to do freestanding structures...
Correct.
To sell at a $300,000 price.
Correct.
I think you're in the wrong commission.
Why? Why so?
Because it was approved as an age-restricted development under the zoning regulations. If he's decided that that is not what he wants to do, but he still wants to subdivide the property, it's a planning commission issue. Because if it's not age...
It is zoning, what he's... What you're going in under, we don't have... We don't have a zone for that.
Right, but with Glenn being on board now, can't we have a regulation written? I mean, there are a lot of towns who have had the age restriction removed, Ellington being one of them.
That's correct.
Very successfully done. So, my hope was that...
So, they created condominiums.
Right.
Correct?
Well, they're planned unit develop... It's a planned unit development.
Yeah.
It's a...
Very similar to what PPD that we, you know, and again, the difference between a condo and an apartment, you know, it's a tomato, tomato.
It's not a PDD.
It's not.
Well, right, we realize that.
This is a prior approved development that they no longer want to go forward with. Okay, it's pretty much finished right then.
But the PDD requirements are restrictive, that it speaks to only a certain specific site or town.
PDD in Summers right now is one specific...
Correct.
Geographical area.
Yeah, but we can create more, and that was confirmed, if the board and the town agreed.
Right.
And with, working with Glenn, the regulations have not been finalized and confirmed 100%. They could be adjusted or calibrated to do what's best for the town in general.
Right.
Not one individual member, or not one or two neighbors. You know, I think it would be the right time to look at it and discuss it versus saying... And again, if... I'm not a lawyer, no one here on this board is, I believe, correct? No? The legality, you know, I don't know if it's already been approved, as Carl says is correct. Could he reapprove under new regulations, hypothetically speaking, or how would that go about?
How would that go? It would go simply, you'd file a new application for total consideration from zero, give up any rights you had to the prior approval, and start over from square one.
And that's without any type of zoning regulation changes that we're currently considering.
No, because if he comes back and asks for that kind of a development, it's not allowed.
It's kind of simultaneous.
That development isn't allowed. The age restricted housing is allowed because it's a national program. I mean, everybody's using age restricted housing.
Yep.
It's 55 and... Well, it's a 55 and over.
Technically, some states have decided that it's illegal to...
Correct. It's age discrimination.
Correct.
But the way ours reads is, you know, it's three people can live in the property. There's some things tied to it.
No kids under 21.
To protect the school, the town from massive school influx. Because you cannot, like, in any single-family home, you cannot say how many people can live in a house. You can't. If they're related...
These are gonna be two-bedroom, probably 1300 square foot units.
But it doesn't matter. I could put five people in one bedroom if I wanted.
What were they gonna be before?
Before, well, we bought the property about 10 years ago. They were gonna be bigger. But with the way, you know, we've been in Summers Village. I'm looking for help here.
Oh, no, you know, I understand.
So, I'm trying to just have an informal conversation.
I know.
We've been in Summers Village for 13 and a half years, and I'm still not finished.
I got you.
So, yes, we own this property out right now, so we do need to do something with it. I would like to have that age restriction removed, it's just I don't know how to navigate doing that. I figured with Glenn being involved, at this point, it just makes total sense that Glenn could very easily write a regulation that would allow this.
Correct.
So, I'm trying to... Schools, I have three kids in these schools in town. My son is in fifth grade, he's got 84 kids in his class. I don't think school-aged children is going to be a factor. Our schools are... We have too few students, if you will.
Yeah.
Not too many. And certainly in two-bedroom condos, I'm not gonna...
The way that the budget is equated, as far as schools go, is simple. There is a cost per student in the town.
Yep.
I don't know what it is.
I can find out if it helps right now.
I know it used to be around 10 or 13, 10 to 13,000 dollars per student per year.
Is that per taxpayer? No.
No, it's per student.
They break it down.
Per student per year.
Right.
Per taxpayer would be spread a lot thinner because I don't have any people in the school now.
Right.
Okay? So, but we're still paying. We educated three children in the school system.
Sure.
Taxes are a losing effort to pay for education. They don't on a one-to-one basis. One of the reasons why the Board of Finance agreed to help fund the securing of the Whittaker property was it meant there would be 100 and some odd fewer new homes in town, which was all part of the plan of conservation and development to secure a certain percentage of the town as open space.
Yep.
It's not economically feasible. Development is not.
Well, that's debatable. That's not a fact.
Well, Summers Village has no school-aged children and generates a ton of revenue for the town.
Hey, Lucas?
Yeah.
It's not my opinion.
It is your opinion.[1543.87] It is your opinion, Carl, you smile and snicker over there.
No, it's, it's not my opinion.
The sun ro, right, rises in the west, I'm stating that as a, development has been successful, maybe not in this town, I don't know, I'm not stating that as a fact, but to take you as the God almighty fact guaranteeing individual in a public meeting, I'm sorry, I just have to say, I, I don't know if that's a fact.
Okay, so you can just, you are just disagree with what Carl says, but you're, you're entitled to your opinion?
Yeah.
And if he wants to state a fact, just back it up.
And it's not my opinion, it's, it's based in statistical fact.
Where from, give me a background, an example.
I would have to go find a sp, a specific thing, Lucas, but it was something that was researched at the point in time that we talked to the Board of Finance about feasibility of dedicating tax money to preserving open space, because economically, although you would think of development as being economic development, it really isn't to a town.
Well, I know a little about development, little.
Well, I can tell you Summers Village is, Summers Village is a cash cow to the town.
It is, and that was one of the reasons, but that was, that was the reason why.
Yes, that's why you have the smaller.
That was the reason.
Let, let it, let Carl finish.
Lucas, if you would let me finish, there's a distinction, there are no people being put in the school system in Summers Village.
There's no children living in Summers Village, you're saying that's going to our schools.
Correct, because it's an age restricted development.
No children, twenty-one or over.
And that, and that's why that was.
In that sense, that was economically feasible for the town, the town doesn't maintain the road, they have a homeowners association.
But what about the fire department that has to see about these?
We, we would still have.
They all pay taxes, Lucas, so they generate revenue for the town, they do.
Speaking of, I just.
Well, why don't we let Tom finish what he wants to present?
We, you know, again, in that size house, to suggest that there's gonna be five kids in a two bedroom, twelve or thirteen hundred square foot ranch, I don't think it's fair. Again, I'm, I'm trying to look for guidance and help from you guys, the, the best way for me to develop this property at this point.
All I can be is honest with you and say that currently there is no provision for the type of development that you are proposing.
Understood.
In our regulations.
So now with Glenn.
There is no way to convert your prior approval for one type of development magically to one that is not allowed.
So you're saying that Glenn is not able to write a regulation?
I never said that.
Okay, so that's, that's what I'm asking for.
Yes.
While, while Glenn, and I'm happy to pay for it, but let Glenn write the regulation.
Tom, you're gonna get more if you speak to an expert, she'll be able to help and guide you.
Oh, let me interject.
Because talking to us and sharing opinions or facts or whatever we each believe they are, uh, is gonna just go in circles, and.
Well, we just, we work from our regulations.
Correct.
So what our regulations, and that's what, and that's what Carl's saying, currently today, there's nothing in our regulations that permits that.
And we are working on changing it.
Let me summarize for a thing, I think that there's miscommunication I don't think you guys are getting, Tom is not asking for an exception to remove the age restricted housing from his approval.
Correct.
What Tom is doing is engaging in a conversation with the commission to entertain, would the commission be willing to talk to Glenn about some other type of zone that would allow him and a few other developers in town to do some sort of smaller housing neighborhood? Or, you know, or, or do you suggest you're, or are you not willing to do that, do you suggest that he actually, you know, make a specific application for a text amendment to the zoning, I think that's what he's getting at, he's not asking for it to be approved, removed from his approval.
That's correct.
My recollection, in the discussions we had with Glenn about the zoning regulations that we were working on, was that we did have a discussion on that, including it.
Well, I don't recall that, so here we are, uh, up in the air, so.
So it's just a last conversation with the commission while you're still working on the draft, you know, so he, he.
I'm not telling you not to do it, I'm not telling you that I wouldn't support it, I'm only pointing out that you have approval for one type of development right now.
Right.
In reading your letter, it sounded like one thing you would kind of like to do would be to just convert it to another type.
Well, in order, and I tried to convey this in the letter, in, in order for me to get to a three hundred thousand dollar price point, I need to move the product. I can't be there for six or seven or eight years, because then it's costing me money, it still costs me money to be in Summers Village every single day. So, to try and target that, and some of you, I know you're a Realtor, Jill, you're familiar, you dealt with the place on Taylor Road, if you're not moving the product, all it's doing is costing you money. So to try and get to that price with an age restriction attached, I don't think I can do that. I think there's a need in this town, as I, as I explained in my letter.
Are you telling me that you think at three hundred thousand dollars, they'd move quick?
Without an age restriction? Yes, I do.
Why, why wouldn't it, wait, why wouldn't it move, why, I'm just gonna ask, why wouldn't it move quick at three hundred thousand with an age restriction? Because there's a lot of people that can't afford the four hundred thousand, that are always asking for that lower number for age restriction, I see it all the time.
You do?
Yeah. Look, there's a.
How long was Sporandio with that project over there, and I don't wanna get argumentative.
That's a personal thing.
But I, I mean, he, he came to me to buy the project, I had many conversations with Mark, I knew what your price points were over there, and it didn't work, he, he, he tried to lower price over there.
I'm not, this is a public forum, we're being taped, I'm not gonna say exactly what the financial sys, situation was over there, you know, that's something different, that was Enfield, that was a different project, that's not Summers. Okay, it was a fifty-five and over, could more houses have sold over there at a lower price point? Yes.
But you have to be able to be, be able to produce the product at that price, building costs.
Saying you can, but you're saying you can produce the product at that price for any old family, why not for a fifty-five and over then?
If you can sell it, that's, that's the problem.
There's not as many fifty-five year old people buying homes.
That's right, you're, you're opening up the pool.
The millennial, it's, it's proven, and I can.
I'm trying to understand what the, because I've spoke to the commission on this before, I'm trying to understand, yes, this commission, and I'm trying to understand what is, why are you so not willing to even entertain this?
I don't know.
We didn't say that, we didn't say that, we said.
How many of the prior meetings, when the conversation came up on something other than age restricted development of this type, have you sat in on? With the public, when they came to the public hearings?
Well, I was at your big one, uh, whenever that one was.
There were, which one?
I don't know.
The last one.
Twenty seconds.
Yeah.
The last one we had.
And was on, was one of the topics about how people would feel about development of that type?
I don't think so, exactly.
Well, Jeff Lipton spoke about it.
Yep.
Jeff Lipton did speak about it briefly.
Briefly.
I mean, I can tell you that when the lady who ran the tobacco farm on Four Bridges Road came in to speak to the commission about putting up housing for migrant workers, that came out of the woodwork, and it got passed, because it should have been passed, because what she was asking for was living quarters for the people who were gonna work the tobacco farm. There is a faction of the population in this town, for whatever reason, does not want condominiums here.
But that, that population, let's say it's three percent, I don't think they deserve to dictate the way the entire town goes, if not, this could be Carl's town.
When you, when you come to what, no.
Lucas, I'm not one of the people, so.
Well, I'm giving you an example, so.
No, you're making one accusation of another about me.
I could give you an accusation that you could clearly understand if you wanted me to, Carl, I am not making an accusation.
I'm gonna stop this right here, okay, so.
If you would like to make an application for us to consider the inclusion of, are you proposing that it would be something that would have homeowners association?
Yes.
So it would be a condominium complex? If you would like to petition the commission for a regulation allowing condominiums in Summers, I would, I would applaud you and encourage you to do so. I will not, I will not come out against it, I'll say that right now, but I will go with the majority of the public, because it's their town, it's not my town, and they're not my regulations.
Right, so where does that go though, without a, a zoning reg for that type of housing? Does it not make sense to have him draft something?
Before there were a regulation to allow age restricted development, there was no provision to allow age restricted development. There was an interest on the part of some of the pub, of some of the developers in doing that, I believe, the year old partner was one of them, along with Chat Lat, and a couple other people. They approached, then the planner, showed an interest, we put together the, the beginnings, we were working with, I believe, Bob, the groundwork for the regulation that allowed age restricted development, and it passed.
Yeah.
It passed because it was age restricted development, and that's from my experience, that's not my opinion.
Right.
There are many things that I approve and disapprove that never come out in these meetings, because it's not for me.
If, if I were you, and not even given suggestions, what Carl said is absolutely correct, we have a zoning enforcement officer, we have a plan, uh.
We don't have a planner.
Planted Metrics, not a planner, I do not.
No, we're, we're.
And I'm just saying, you, you would go through, you can ask for another, uh, application to be, you'd fill out another application, or you could speak with her and find out the proper procedure for requesting a revision, because if we had no age restriction, it could be changed in the future, and I'm having a conversation, I'm not telling you.
That's what I came here for.
And that's what I'm trying to, I hope other board members can see, by saying, it, I think it's fairly simple, the process you need to take to get there, and I would start with.
But him talking to me, we have talked about that, it's really just a matter of him making a plea to the commission if you would consider that, when you're going over the draft with Glenn. So we're supposed to meet July fifteenth, you know, you wanna bring it up, anybody wants to bring it up and talk to Glenn about it then, and then if not, if you don't wanna bring it up, and then as a general, if, you know, the majority of the commission doesn't wanna make any changes like that, then it's, you know, a moot point, and then, and then, so Tom has to kind of, now you just need to kind of wait and see if anyone brings it up, you've brought it to their attention again, they've expressed their concerns, and it would just be for you to, um, apply for a text amendment on your own.
And I have no issue bringing it up, because what you're saying, I've also had concerns over, uh, as a citizen, or, you know, somebody living in Summers, but, uh, you know, again, I, there's no guarantee, but as a town member, you've asked people that were appointed by, uh, our first selectman, I think it would only be, uh, the right thing to do to bring it up. I can't say anyone here is going to support it one hundred percent, or not support, or whichever way, but I believe it's, you've taken the time and effort to speak with our CEO, you've come before this board, I have no issue bringing it up, uh, on July fifteenth, I cannot, you know, what the other members feel like doing, or, you know, that's up in the air.
Now, that's a meeting that I can't attend, is it necessary that I be there?
No, we can talk anyways.
Oh, all right, so it doesn't matter now, because we are on.
It's live, it's recorded, so you could go and watch it.
Okay.
And every second by detail, that's how I watch the one I missed.
Okay.
It's, you know, on YouTube, or if you go to our website, there's a link, you can click, you know, you can see everything, from the moment she says start and till we say stop, it's.
The next, the meeting on the fifteenth, is that the day it is?
Yeah, yeah.
It's a working session, it's not a public information day, so.
No, but you can, they can sit in on it.
Yeah, well, anyone can.
Right, but he can't speak, is what I'm getting at.
All right, so if I'm not there, it doesn't matter, because I can't talk anyway. Understood.
And your, your question is, could there be a lifting of the age restriction?
He's got a letter.
On our zoning.
Two.
Yeah, you have that in your email.
Yeah, yeah, oh, I read it, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks for coming in.
I just, Tom, I just wanted to make sure that you were aware that you cannot just switch your approval.
I, I understand that completely, I understand the new regulation has to be written for this, but it just seems as though now is the most opportune time to do that.
When we're doing it.
Especially with the state that our state is in, and our town is in, from a financial point of view, if I can get these homes on the tax roll quicker, that, to me, is better. I, I mean, I know the, the school age argument is, seems to be the argument, but, uh, I don't know how many kids we're gonna have here, and we actually need the kids in the schools anyway.
Depends on what, what it costs to educate a kid in the school, honestly, as far as that goes, if you're gonna look at that as an equation.
But our enrollment, Carl, is, is way, way, way down, way down.
And people like that, because their kids get more attention.
Which means the cost per student is greater, because there's fewer kids, and the costs don't go down, they don't reduce.
The fifth grade got rid of a teacher, because there were not enough students, that's the grade that my son's in, and I have two in the high school.
As long as they didn't have. Doesn't have a gym, she can't have her own gym class, she's gotta, they split that up, because they don't, you know, there, there's issues, obviously, nothing's perfect.
Right.
You know, but there's issues there.
If I remember right, when they were going to do that project, they had to put in a, um, a huge leach mail?
Yes.
Either that or it was a self-contained unit of some kind, I think.
Or, but, do you still have the property to do that? Yeah, 'cause that's the main thing that's a problem, you know.
It passed Steve, no problem, for, for the, for the density of the development, it passed Steve, no problem, there were no issues.
Well, I mean, that's.
The site was no issue, it fits.
That land has been divided on the front, I didn't know how far.
Was only seventeen?
Seventeen.
I didn't know how far back it went, you know, when they built that in the front.
We go about nine hundred feet in off of Eleanor Road, where Eleanor Road dead ends, we go in about another nine hundred feet, all the systems are on the left, because the wetlands are on the right.
Yeah.
Uh, but it's all gravel, if you're familiar with, where Lino built, and where Bob Jinger's built, they were hauling.
That's a gravel.
Awesome material out of there, right, so we've got the same stuff.
I was just wondering if you still have that same, uh, land that we're doing with.
Bob was, my, my father-in-law was Guy.
Oh, Guy, okay.
Who died, Bob was his brother.
Okay, I wasn't sure which, I know it was one of the Jingers.
Yeah.
Jingers.
So.
I wasn't sure.
So, again, I'm just looking for some guidance.
Was, was that property zone, um, industrial before, and switched, was it always residential?
No, the industrial, that was residential.
That was always residential?
The industrial is the Eleanor Road, the factory property where they.
Right, the factory. And that's right, that's right there, too, isn't it?
It is, and they just put up the storage buildings.
Do you have to drive by that to get to where you are?
Correct.
But, you know, it was there.
It was there.
That factory has been there.
Oh, I know the factory's been there.
Again, you know, one of the reasons to try and get to a lower number, you know, to help with what they've gotta look at as they drive in. Uh, you know, a, a person buying a four hundred thousand dollar hi, house may have more of an issue as opposed to someone who's spending three, is what I'm saying.
Just as an aside, I mean, the whole thing about the age restricted was very, very interesting to me when we passed it.
Yeah.
When I ever heard at what price they were gonna start at, I shook my head, because I can tell you that being a person who's of the age that would think of downsizing.
Right.
We're gonna sell my two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar home to buy one for half a million?
Right.
No, I'm not gonna ever.
So, we get a lot of people from Summers who are looking for something else, uh, but they can't afford what we have at Summers Village, but, you know, to your point, before everything crashed, we couldn't go fast enough, once we got started, we put up about thirty-five buildings in two and a half years, so if things hadn't changed, I think we would have been done and out of there a long time ago.
That was with every, everything, every fifty, it was a stalemate.
Everything, of course. Yeah, yeah.
And, um.
It wasn't just that business, it was every business.
No, it wasn't.
And I've heard from other developers that, for one, the banks aren't really interested in age restriction anymore, because they got burned in too many of them.
Too many, and they're, they're overdone at this point, uh, you know, just in our town alone, I've got eighty, I don't know what Rogers ended up with over there, but it was twenty plus anyway, do we need seventeen more?
And these are even more expensive than yours.
These are more expensive than ours.
Yeah, people buying yours are coming from Long Meadow, too, they're not just coming from, they're coming from out of town, too, because certainly we were, too, we were coming from out of town, it wasn't a lot of locals buying.
We get, we get our fair share of Summers people, I, I see you in there visiting a lot of your friends, uh, we get our share, but yeah, we draw from a lot of other towns as well.
Do they have public water there?
Yes.
Public water, yes.
And sewer.
In Summers Village, we have sewer, not on Eleanor Road, we have public water.
On Eleanor Water, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So, well, I'll take that in consideration.
Okay.
Yeah, I wasn't getting so much for telling you no, I was just trying to be realistic about it.
Right, all right.
Okay.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming on.
So now we have minutes approval for June third. These are the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of, uh, June third, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
Dan made a motion, Carl seconded, all in favor? Approving the June third, two thousand nineteen minutes as written?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, minutes, minutes, minutes are approved as written.
Yeah.
Okay. Someone can make a motion to adjourn?
Some will. How do you make that motion?
Second.
Carl, Dan made a motion to adjourn, Carl seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Adjournment at seven seventeen PM, thank you.